So I'm gonna call this meeting to order. And I'll ask that you join me for a moment of silence before we do the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, next we will have a roll call.
Commissioner Ruppert?
Here.
Commissioner Kelly?
Here.
Commissioner Allen is... Commissioner Jones?
Here.
Forget this every time. Commissioner O'Connor?
Present.
Commissioner Lanier?
Present.
Mayor Bliss?
Yes, thank you. All right, next, I'll get moving. I'm looking around for, I thought that we had a group of individuals who would be coming to sell us poppies today, but I don't see them. So I'm gonna move on the agenda, and if by chance they come late, I will let them interject. Although I forgot my cash in my office. So I may have to borrow some money from someone. Thank you. But I just saw, I just saw my note about the significance of the poppies. So anyway, we'll just keep that on hand in case they show up. So with that, it'll, we'll move to public comments. So there are multiple opportunities for public comment tonight. We have our first opportunity for public comment, which is public comment on anything that we're actually voting on tonight. So if you have the agenda in front of you, we have a whole list of items that we talked about earlier in one of our meetings. So we have a number of standing committee meetings, and you'll see those agenda items. And so if you're here to speak on something that we're actually going to vote on tonight, there's an opportunity at the beginning of the meeting, I'll open up that opportunity in just a moment to provide public comment. And then we have a couple... We have one public hearing tonight. So if you're here tonight to speak on the regional drainage improvements for Naps Corner, that public hearing is a little bit later on on the agenda. And then at the end of the meeting, we'll open it up for public comment on anything that you want to speak to. So I'll open up this first opportunity for public comment. If you're here to speak about something that we're actually voting on, you can come up to this stand right here. There's a microphone, we ask that you speak into it. And you can provide your comments, you'll be given up to three minutes to speak. We ask that you, over on the side table against the wall, there's a sign-up sheet. And we ask that if you speak, you can do this before you speak or after you speak, that you write down your name, just so that our city clerk can make sure it's accurate in our files. So if you're here to speak on something that we're voting on tonight, now's an opportunity to come forward. All right, seeing none, oh. Good evening.
Good evening fellow citizens, this is House of the People, Watchdog Miller, reporting. Welcome to Simon and the Grease Square where none of the black local bus routes come downtown. But however, today, we were accosted by a group of 400 illegal aliens who weren't arrested.
Mr. Miller, are you gonna speak to something we're voting on? Do you want to tell us what item it is?
Yes, indeed, thank you. Items 9B369 and D3D4, no dollar figures, Mr. Clerk. It's their job to get these dollar figures in. Public's business is, the philosophy around here has been recently, a public's business is not a public's business. We need dollar figures on those items. 9B369, D34. X9B2, also already a buck's involved in the, on item two, with the Shoreline Regional Agreement. 9A1, on the Housing Commission, what is her housing program? Angela Bun, why was she chosen above all the other eligible candidates? And specifically, what is her position on keeping and expanding our Veterans Home with three property addresses up in Monroe? Let's pick up the 3019 Coit Property, which was cited on a deed back in the 1880s when that property was conveyed for veterans' eternal use. And then the third property on Three Mile, is it necessary on Three Mile? What's her position? Let's go to 69, no dollar figures. Next on 7, under C7. Putting a sidewalk in on Lake Michigan Drive, but why were these vital all stops for the Local 12 and the Express 50 at Cowan Dale and Oakley, why were they canceled? Is it because historic activists Bonnie Burke and Rena Davis organized in those neighborhoods? Is this retaliation? Let's go to D3, I'm suspicious of something called public agency. Who the heck are they? Let's go to D4. Corner Eastern and Eastern Frank, I name, you know anybody working around that neighborhood? Commissioner Jones, so why don't those neighborhoods, why doesn't the Jim Crow Four, the Eastern, come downtown? We're gonna kaboom around all this and the bus routes like the Jim Crow Four and your...
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Thank you, your time's up. Thank you.
Uncle Tom too.
Thank you. All right, anyone else who wishes to be heard on items that we're voting on tonight? Okay, seeing none, I'm gonna close that opportunity for public comment. And next up will take us to our approval of our minutes. And Commissioners, this is for multiple meetings that we had on April 24th, including our budget meeting. Can I get a motion?
Vote, support.
Any questions, comments, changes? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. We have no petitions and communications tonight, so that will take us to the report of our city officers. And we have three items.
Control, sorry. Controllers report for the period of April 18, 2018 through April 24, 2018, in the amount of $4,098,301.91.
That is received and filed.
Treasurers report for the period of April 13, 2018 through April 23, 2018.
That is also received and filed.
And purchasing forecasting report for goods and services.
And that is also received and filed. Okay, next up will take us to our consent agenda and reports on standing committees. So on your agenda, there's a whole list of items under our consent agenda. And these are items that we voted on earlier today, and either in one of our subcommittees or at the Committee of the Whole, and where there was a unanimous vote on those items. So tonight with one voice vote, we'll adopt those items. So can I get a motion?
So moved.
Vote.
All right, Commissioners, any additional questions or comments? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. All right, that will take us to our ordinances to be adopted. And we have two ordinances before us tonight.
Ordinance amending, I'll get that. Ordinance amending section one of the Budget Ordinance 2017-36 for fiscal year 2018, amendment, amendment number 19.
Can I get a motion?
Vote, support.
All right, Commissioner Jones, you want to tell us about this?
Yes, Mayor, today for the Budget Ordinance, we had six items. And one in particular that I wanted to bring to light was the acceptance of some grants, actually from Herman Miller Cares Grant, as well as the Cook Foundation. And it was a total of $56,000 that went toward improvements at Roosevelt Park. And this was an effort that was between our Parks Department and the folks over at Friends of GR Parks. And so I wanted to make mention of that, and that there was, those improvements made over at Roosevelt Park. And there was no change to the contingent balance.
Great. All right, Commissioners, any questions or comments?
I just want to say, since I neglected to say it on Saturday, it also includes money that Mayor Bliss raised for the tree planting on Saturday. So thanks for your work to raise all that money.
Thank you, Commissioner. And playing, if you drive around, it really is a present. And thanks to really the community, but thank you Commissioner, and thank you for being there. And Commissioner Lanier as well. All right, so this is a roll call vote tonight?
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Lanier? Commissioner O'Connor?
Yes.
Commissioner Ruppert?
Yes.
Commissioner Kelly?
Yes.
Mayor Bliss?
Yes, and can I get a motion to give this immediate effect?
Vote, support.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. All right, next up will take us to our second ordinance to be adopted tonight.
Ordinance authorizing sanitary sewer system series 2018 revenue bonds.
Vote, support.
All right, Commissioner Kelly, you want to tell us about this?
Yes, Mayor, this is a series 2018 bond issue that's proposed to provide up to $55 million in bond proceeds to pay all or a portion of the costs of constructing system improvements and related components in public infrastructure directly affected by those improvements. And those consist of a carbon recovery system for co-digestion of solids and concentrated waste, phosphorus recovery system, sanitary sewer separation projects, leave-in-place lining of sanitary sewers, and other facilities equipment improvement. So these bonds will not be general obligations of the city or considered indebtedness for the city within any constitutional limitations. They're actually gonna be structured to mitigate the impact of additional debt to the city of Grand Rapids.
Great, thank you. So Commissioners, I have a couple votes on this one. The first one I will ask for, and then I'll see if there's comments or questions on this. Can I get a motion for immediate consideration of this ordinance?
So moved.
Vote.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, all right, immediate consideration passes. Next, does anyone have any questions or comments about the ordinance that we're looking at tonight? Okay, so then I will move to doing a roll call vote.
Commissioner Lanier?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Connor?
Yes.
Commissioner Ruppert?
Yes.
Commissioner Kelly?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Mayor Bliss?
Yes, and then can I get a motion to give this immediate effect?
So moved, support.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. All right, next up will take us to our public hearings. We have one public hearing tonight, and that is a public hearing regarding regional drainage improvements for Naps Corner. And to kick this off, before I open it for public comment, I'll ask Jessica Wood from our City Attorney's Office to come forward and give us an update on this, and set the stage, and then I'll open it up for public comment if you're here tonight to be heard on this issue. Welcome.
Good evening.
Evening.
So I know you're pretty familiar by now with this Naps Corner regional drainage improvements topic. You might recall that on April 10th, you passed a resolution that authorized the filing of an intent to file a petition with the Kent County Drain Commissioner for these improvements. The same time you set this public hearing. Meanwhile, that notice of intent was mailed to the Drain Commissioner, and notice of this hearing was mailed to the property owners who might be here tonight. Although, this has been a very collaborative process, and so you're gonna hear more about some updates from Interim City Manager. But you might recall that this work relates to improving the Naps Corner in two phases. Phase one is essentially construction of a water main extension. And phase two, as initially proposed, involved drain improvements, which is why the Drain Commissioner was initially involved. So there's no action requested on this tonight. Again, it's just the public hearing that you set back on the 10th. And no action would be required until May 22nd for this. So in terms of the collaboration and the update, especially regarding phase two, I think Eric DeLong would like to speak with you about that.
I'm up here.
Oh, you're up. That's all right, that's all right. Right there, I'm sorry.
We didn't script that, so. Thank you, Jessica.
Yeah.
So since the, Jessica mentioned the collaboration that's been going on in this district. And when we, we had a meeting with the property owners in March, late March, to talk about the second phase, and told everybody about the process that we were moving forward with. And that started some thinking, which was, has been really helpful. And we've had several meetings since that time. The latest one was last Friday. And during last Friday's meeting, the partners came to some, I think, consensus agreements that we'll be working on between now and May 22nd. So the first one was to continue with this public hearing and hold it tonight, so everybody had a chance to talk about the project as originally envisioned. The second consensus agreement that we came to was that proceeding with the water main project is vitally important, and all parties agree that that's something that we should do. And the parties that were part of that meeting thought it was so important that they agreed to private pay their share rather than be assessed for it. So that will actually potentially speed the process, but it also helps us decouple the financing of the water main from the financing of the long-term storm drainage improvements, which is, gets to our third agreement, which is, we'd like to have more time to talk about what phase two might look like. Because there are, the solution that is proposed, that the partners that we, that we came up with, that's part of the project that's proposed, we know it'll work. It's very standard engineering, it's a capital project, it's something we would do all the time. It's also very expensive. And so if we have an alternative to do something different, that might be less expensive, less impactful, that might also have different environmental benefits, we want to explore that. So, so that's what we would like to do. And so between now and May 22nd, we intend to work with the parties to develop this financing agreement. And we would bring that to you on May 22nd. And then if that's successful, and I trust it will be, that we'll have, we can, then on the 22nd, decouple the phase two project from the water main project. We'll proceed with the water main project, and then we'll, we'll engage in longer-term discussions about the storm drainage project. Because then that'll give us time to, I think, vet these ideas and come up with a better project. So that would be, that's, the plan is, I see it going forward. And I think the partners probably see it that way too. And that's what I would recommend that we do. But I think we ought to talk tonight about, you know, about the whole thing.
Okay, all right, that's how it was originally noticed, so we thought it best to go forward with the public hearing. Yes, I agree.
Unless you have any questions, engineers are here. If you have any science questions.
All right, do we have any science questions? Or legal questions? Okay, thank you Jessica. So this, I'll open up this opportunity for public comment specifically for this item. So if you're here to speak tonight on the regional drainage improvements for Naps Corner, now is the time to come forward. Same rules apply, we ask that you share your name, the city that you live in, you'll be given up to three minutes to speak. Does anyone want to speak on this? Okay. Oh, Mr. Miller? Is that you raising your hand?
How wide is the water main?
Oh, how wide is the water main? That's a good question. I'll look to, do we have an engineer, Wayne? Large?
12-inch water main.
12-inch, 12-inch water main. All right, any other que... Do you want to come forward and speak?
Hello, I'm Bill Mast, I'm with East Beltline Development. We've, we're working on the project just there by Spartan Stores. And this, this is a large project, it's got a lot of history to it. Costs associated with it, as Eric pointed out, are large. There is a couple different, there's several different ideas on how to improve not only quality of the water for the area residents, but also the pond drainage, which can, that part of it could probably take a lot more studying, as Eric has also mentioned. We, and I believe some other neighbors of ours with parking lots in the area, as Eric mentioned, are interested in or willing to privately fund or assist our, pay our share of privately funding the water main project to help, A, help that, speed that along and take some of the controversy away from it, so. That, I just wanted to read that into the record. I've given Eric a letter on our reaction to the larger issues, but I just want to make that part of it clear.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that, and appreciate all of your partnership to try to resolve this. Anyone else who would like to be heard? Okay, I'm gonna close that public hearing then, and we will trust that there will be additional meetings and conversations to try to find a good solution here with our partners.
Yes, and I want to thank the partners in the project for their openness to other solutions and creativity. And I think it's, it'll be a good process.
Great, thank you. All right, next up will take us to our last opportunity for public comment tonight. So if you're here to speak on anything else that is on your heart and mind, now's an opportunity to come forward. Look, like Scott is first up. So you'll be given three minutes, we ask that you, speaking... I'm not gonna, I won't, I won't start, I won't start the clock, I won't, I promise. Scott, can you make sure too that you, after you're done speaking or before, that you put your name on the list just so our city clerk gets that right in the record?
I can do that. My name is Scott Atchison, I live in Ward 3, I grew up in Ward 2, and I sometimes work in Ward 1. I'm here to tell you what we have here in public entities such as the city of Grand Rapids. We've got the city of Grand Rapids, Kent County, the Downtown Development Authority, the Convention and Arena Authority, Convention and Visitor Bureau, Downtown Improvement District, DGRI, SMG. We have all those government entities here. SMG is a private entity, but what we do not have is a visitor center downtown. Even on the way here today, I was stopped at an intersection, somebody is dancing around with the cell phone, trying to find information. We need a visitor center, it needs to be built right at Roosevelt Park Circle. You know, what we have here is an opportunity to build it. What's gonna happen here in the next 15 days? We're gonna have 50,000 people downtown for the Riverbank Run. No information, this information boost is part of downtown infrastructure. It's gonna have immediate and future benefits. Now, let's not talk about money here, your budget is over $400 million. What's the DDA budget? What's Kent County's budget? All of your budgets together here in Kent County are over a billion dollars, and you guys can't come up with $150,000 to build an information center with DDA funds for the Convention and Visitor Bureau to run rent-free? This is what we need, we need a daily menu matrix downtown so every visitor will know what's open for restaurants and bars. Every day. We don't have anything like that. If, to look at your cell phone to try to find out everything with, like, in a mile of Roosevelt Park Circle would take you hours. We have no human contact, and also part of the city through the DDA, you're spending hundreds of thousands of dollars on wandering ambassadors. They're just wandering around soliciting people to see if they need information. You know, I'm saying, in a visitor center, how many cities have a visitor center? But we need, the people in this booth wouldn't be waiting there, they would be getting the information, the restaurant menus, the specials, every day for everybody. What else do I have here? This would be great for DeVos Place and Van Andel Arena. We got Tim McGraw and Faith Hill coming here, that's gonna be another 18,000 people downtown. They're gonna want to know what's open. Then we're gonna have festival, look at these little graphics here. Riverbank Run, wedding parties, we have hundreds of wedding parties with visitors from all over the country coming here with no information system. So what I'm suggesting, I'm gonna go and say something similar to the Convention and Arena Authority on Friday. I'll see you there, Rosalyn.
I was gonna say, I'll look forward to seeing you there.
You know, I'm gonna tell the county the same thing. The city of Grand Rapids through the DDA should fund the construction for the Convention and Visitor Bureau, Experience Grand Rapids, to run every day of the year. This would be good for the city, good for the county, the DDA should fund it, and the staff of the Convention and Visitor Bureau, they run it at the airport, they should run it downtown. That's all I'm gonna say today, thank you.
Thank you, thank you Scott. All right, others who wish to be heard?
Watchdog Miller back, I'd like to thank Citizen Atchison for tremendous work he's in diligence and perseverance he's done on this over the years. I agree with him, these wandering ambassadors, all of them seen younger than 22 years old. When he talks, you know, he come up and asked me, I don't know how many times, and they don't know Grand Rapids very well, senior citizens are excluded, and that's further down in gender, making this an age-friendly community. Why aren't any of these ambassadors, well, people who know the city? In terms of specifically, we used to have something terrific, 60, 70 years ago, that was a railroad travelers assistance agency or something like that. These were wonderful ladies, retirees, they'd be at our train depots, and we had up to six at one time, particularly Union Depot, helping puzzled, lost, you know, sociologically, socially lost citizens come in. I came across a gal four weeks ago out of Battle Creek. And I thought, how great it would have been if we had a actual, at least for the last bus coming in at night, in the bus depot, some kind of railroad, railroad travel, bus travelers assistance agency, and have it funded, at least for, we've got about 14 round trips, intercity bus round trips, way more than that, that suddenly Tunaville Trolley Train, you know, 6:00 AM start. So it would be very helpful and focused to have somebody there, at least to meet the last bus. Next, part of what's being done now is all these hotels have concierge. I did the same thing during my parish years, only it was called the Day Year de Noi. So I worked at no pay, but it was called, like, a watchman of the night. None of these concierge can pronounce it, you know, just ask them, and it's kind of, you know, going like, like this, or no, at least pronounce it right. But, so part of what Mr. Atchison has been calling for is already done by our hotels. Sometimes I have a couple in the pant one, so, but again, we can't ever be extending our gratefulness to Citizen Atchison for all the work he's done on this issue over the years. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Miller. All right, others who wish to be heard? Okay, seeing none, I'm gonna close that last opportunity for public comment, and I will turn to my colleagues on the commission. So I will start down here with Commissioner Park.
Yeah, thanks for coming out tonight. I just want to say, we approved our work with public agencies, so we need you all to show up. We'll be sure to get that information out as far and wide as we can. So please, show up to those meetings to speak into those four housing recommendations.
Thank you, Commissioner?
Well, Mayor, I want to thank you too. I actually serve on the Urban Forestry Committee as the liaison, and I wasn't helping you on Saturday. Sorry about that.
That's okay.
Last year, but really appreciate you and all the volunteers who came out to plant more trees in our city. And also police, police officer over here who comes faithfully to be with us. Thank you for coming each time, and thank you all for showing up tonight.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Jones?
Just thanks to all who came out on this evening, and everyone have a great night.
Thank you, Commissioner? Commissioner Lanier?
Well, you know, it's a half hour into this meeting, and it's hot outside. So I'm just excited this evening. And also want to just thank the mayor for the work this weekend with planting the trees. Commissioner Jones's daughter joined us to fill in for him in his absence while he was traveling, and we had a really good time getting some trees planted on the west side, which we heard was the best side, and we weren't sure about all of that, but it was a really good... What was the gentleman's name who received the?
Anthony Tyrone.
Yeah, so Tony's award was really, or dedication of a tree, and...
It's at Lincoln Park.
At Lincoln Park was really special, and so that was a great thing, thank you.
Thank you. Interim City Manager?
No, that's great.
City Attorney?
I just have an issue that he's had two meetings and they both got a ruling.
You better knock on wood, knock on wood. Well, Commissioners, I will, I will end with two things. One, those of you who joined us at Kids Speak on Friday, thank you. It was a really powerful day of listening to young people share testimony. You know, there's so much wisdom in young people, and having an opportunity to hear how their lives are impacted by what's happening right now, particularly around immigration, was really powerful. It took a lot of courage for those kids to get up here and stand and speak to a room full of elected officials. And I just, I was grateful for those of you who were able to join us and to hear that testimony. Those of you who weren't there, it is on YouTube, so you can watch it if you want. And it was a little over two hours, but it's worth it, well, worth the time to listen to it. And then secondly, Commissioners, this Saturday, there is going to be a 5K race downtown kicking off at Roosevelt Park Circle. And it's being organized to raise money for the Casey and Sidney DeVos Foundation to raise money for ALS and ALS research. And they're gonna be highlighting and honoring Officer Scott Balsma. And so if you're able to join me Saturday morning at Roosevelt Park Circle, I would love to have you join me, but also to just help spread the word and do what we can to support Officer Balsma, so. Mark your calendars, I'll have, I'll have Laura also send out, oh, are you sending out right now? I'll have Laura send out some information for you. But I'm really hopeful to see a lot of our city family there to support this 5K run and support one of our officers, so we'll get that to you. All right, and with that, we will... All right, and with that, we will adjourn.